Today's meeting of the Planning and Highways Committee on Tuesday the 12th of September 2023. I'll hand you over to Paul to announce the housekeeping arrangements.
Thank you Chair.
It said Paul on my list, I thought there was a Paul in the room somewhere. Sorry Abby, over to you.
Thank you. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards, the Assembly Pointers at Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you for that Abby. I'm now going to ask each member in turn to introduce themselves and then I'll come on to the officers afterwards. So I'm councillor Mike Chapton and I'm one of the joint chairs of this committee and I'm chairing the meeting today. So Alan?
Alan Woodcock, councillor for East Ecclesfield and co-chair with Mike.
Paul, councillor for Walkley.
Peter Price, councillor for Shagreen Brightside.
Good afternoon, Ebyul, councillor for Netherwady and Sherrill.
Hi everybody, councillor Gary Wetherall, Shagreen Brightside Board.
Roger Davidson, councillor for Ecclesall.
Clintus Chapman, councillor for Mossborough.
Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecclesall.
Cliff Woodcraft, councillor for Fullwood.
Thank you. And shall we start with Deena? Sorry, I'm told we don't normally introduce officers, so I'll let them introduce themselves as and when they're called upon to speak. Abby, can I have apologies for absence please?
Thank you Chair. We have had apologies for absence today from councillor Laura Moynihan and councillor Tony Downing.
Moving to item three, exclusions of the public and press, there are no items that require that today. Item four, declarations of interest. Are there any members who wish to declare an interest to any of the items of business on the agenda? If so, then please can you state what those items are? I take silence to mean that no one has got any declarations of interest. So on to item five, that's the minutes of the previous meeting and they're in your supplementary report one. So on page one, is there anything? Page two. Page three. And page four. Are people happy that that's a correct record? Thank you. Item six, site visit. We had one yesterday and the date for the next site visit is in members' diaries for Monday the 9th of October between 10 and 12. Item seven, tree preservation order number 470 to 4423 Glossop Road Sheffield S10. And that's on page nine of the agenda and in supplementary report two. Vanessa Lyons, would you like to present the report?
Thank you. I'm seeking confirmation of TPO 470, which was made on the 16th of March 2023. It protects a lime tree which stands within the curtilage of 423 Glossop Road. And this tree is located in the Broome Hill Conservation Area, so it's protected to a limited extent by Section 211 of the Town and Country Planning Act. And you can see a copy of the order with its map at Appendix A. There is planning permission which has been granted on the site for the construction of a small extension to the rear of the house. And the condition of the permission is the retention and the pruning of the lime, which is a subject of the order. The lime tree stands within several metres of the rear of the house, it's in a small raised garden area. And adjacent to this, a little further back, within a car parking area is a second lime tree. And this is not included in the order because it was found to be of lesser quality. And you can see images of both of the trees at Appendix C. When granting planning permission, authorities have a duty to ensure that planning conditions are used to provide for tree preservation and planting. And the order should be made in respect of trees where it appears necessary in connection with the grant of permission to give effect to the conditions. As officers were considering conditioning retention of the trees in conjunction with the granting of consent, I was asked to inspect the trees to determine their quality and suitability for retention and subsequently for their protection under an order. And the benefit of the order at this point will be to add weight to any conditions seeking retention of the tree and ensure that the tree was fully regarded during the construction phase. I inspected the trees on the 10th of March, assessed them using the tree evaluation method for preservation orders, which you can see at Appendix B. The tree closest to the house was found to be a mature lime of larger stature, it's very publicly visible. And it's very prominent within the street scene of Glossop Road because you can see this tree from a distance both up and down the road. And it's therefore visible to a large number of people who use the very busy road on a daily basis. The tree is close, it's within four metres of the house at Glossop Road, but it's been able to grow to its size without causing damage to the house. It was estimated by landscape officers that the tree could be retained during the extension that was proposed. Given this, it was estimated the tree had a likely retention span of about 20 years. And we also had some input from council ecology officers who stated that the tree may support habitat with regards potential bat roosts, though we didn't have any direct evidence that bats were roosting in the trees. The tree that's protected in the order is listed as a prominent tree within the Broome Hill Conservation Area. And you can see a copy of the appraisal at Appendix D. And there's an excerpt from the map that lists the tree and that's in Appendix C. The tree scored with 13 points, which indicated a TPO was defensible. And having regard to the score, it was deemed expedient in the interest of amenity to make the tree subject to an order. We did receive one objection from the arboretural consultant working on behalf of the owners of 423 Glossop Road. There is what we thought to be the objection contained within the main body of the report, but this was actually a preliminary letter, so the actual objection is appended as an additional item in the supplementary. The basis of the objection is that the tree doesn't have sufficient amenity to warrant an order, it's outgrown its position, that the TPO is a block to planning permission, there was no expediencies, there was no Section 211. The tree is not marked on the plan, hence, I'm sorry, that the other tree is not marked on the plan, hence the TPO is misleading. In reply, we do think that the tree has sufficient amenity to justify protection with a TPO as per the details of the tempo assessment, which you can see at paragraph 2.7. Retention of the tree will not prevent construction of the proposed extension, so it's not a block to planning permission because that's subsequently been granted. We don't think the tree is outgrowing its location because it's not causing damage to the adjacent structure. And the tree can actually be pruned to ameliorate some of the closeness of the lower branches to the property. We didn't mark the second tree on the map when we made the TPO because we were aware that that tree was due to be removed, so it kind of didn't make sense for us to do that. The tree that has been removed, there's a condition that two other trees are going to be planted to replace the tree that's been removed. But again, we haven't included those on the TPO because we don't really quite know, or I didn't know at the time that the TPO was made where those trees would go. With regards to expediency, we don't need a Section 211 for there to be expediency. An indication that a tree may be removed as part of an application for planning permission is clear enough indication of threat. And that's everything I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you Vanessa and thank you for clarifying that it's which tree it is that the TPO is on. I'm going to open it up to members' questions. Any members' comments? Barbara?
Yeah, we're getting more and more of these sort of arborists specialists, hang on. Yeah, coming through. And they're invariably at odds with what we're being told. And I do find it quite difficult to judge between the two. I mean, in this case, because I know the tree, I feel that, yeah, I'd go with the officer recommendation. But I am concerned that we're getting the same thing through and I really would like some guidance in the future out of this arena to take us through it. Somehow, thank you.
No, I take on board your comments Barbara. I would think perhaps it might be, perhaps have a section, the next time we have a training day, we could include a section on TPOs and...
Chair, we do have some training scheduled, I think in early October, which does include TPO training, so thank you.
Hopefully that will address some of the concerns, Barbara. Peter?
Just to support councillor Masters', support of the officer recommendation Chair. I do know this tree and I think it's a good, it's ideal in that area. I think it adds to the amenity and improves the quality of the actual buildings themselves. I think it's well worth keeping, I fully support the officer recommendation Chair.
Thank you for that Peter and I'm in full agreement too. It's an area that is quite well known to a lot of people in Sheffield, not least because of its proximity to the Royal Hammershire Hospital. So anyone who goes up there on a 120 and has to go to the hospital, that's the 120 bus, will see that prominent in the landscape, so it's something of a landmark there. I'm going to move it to a vote there then. Alan?
For the officer recommendations Chair.
For the officer's recommendation Chair.
Support the recommendation Chair. Support the recommendation sir.
Support the recommendation Chair.
Yes, so do I, I support it.
Support the recommendation Chair.
Support the recommendation.
Yeah, I'm in favour of supporting the officer recommendation Chair.
Thank you for that, members. That application is carried. We'll move on to item nine, no, item eight. This is the other tree preservation order, number 471, the limes at 7A or outside number 7A, Encliff Hall Avenue Sheffield 10. And that's on page 29 of the agenda. It's back to you Vanessa, sorry.
Thank you. So I'm seeking confirmation of tree preservation order number 471. This order was made on the 30th of March 2023 to protect a lime tree which stands on a privately owned highway to the front of 7A Encliff Hall Avenue. The tree is located within the Encliff Conservation Area and so is already protected to a limited extent by Section 211 of the Town and Country Planning Act. A copy of the order with its accompanying map is attached as Appendix A. The tree stands to the front of 7A Encliff Hall Avenue and it's part of an avenue of lime trees which runs along the length of both sides of the road. As Encliff Hall Avenue is an unadopted highway, responsibility for maintenance of the road and the trees within it ordinarily falls upon homeowners whose property front the highway and are known as frontagers. Frontagers typically have ownership of the trees that stand in unadopted highways adjacent to their property. On the 13th of February 2023, the council received a Section 211 notice submitted by a tree surgeon working on behalf of the owner of 7A Encliff Hall Avenue. And it stated the intention to remove the tree. As following from strong winds the week before, it was felt that the tree was leaning more than it had previously done so and that it therefore needed removing as a matter of safety. It was additionally noted in the Section 211 that roots were damaging, the tree's roots were damaging the pavement and also interrupting the electricity supply to the electric gates that front the property. The tree was subsequently inspected by myself on the 28th of February and again on the 13th of March. And due to the potential safety implications outlined in the Section 211 notice, I saw a second and third opinion from both a colleague, a fellow tree officer and also from the manager of the tree service. The inspections revealed some lifting of the tarmac, which is consistent with root growth. This is a normal and common occurrence and you can see it in trees surrounded by tarmac throughout the city. Such damage can be remedied by relaying the tarmac. There was no evidence of the sort of cracking, lifting or disturbance of the ground within the tree's root plate that I thought would be considered typical of a tree experiencing root plate instability. The curb to the base of the tree is higher than the surrounding curb line, but the colour of the curbstone and the presence of moss indicates that this curb has been raised like this for some time. So there's no break in the moss or a clean area of non-weathered stone visible, as would be consistent with a curb that had been recently lifted because the tree was shifting. And when you look back at images from Google Street View, there shows no indication that there's a change in curb alignment from before and after the high wind. And you can see images of that at Appendix C. In fact, if you look far enough back through Google Street View, it indicates that the curb has been elevated since 2008. The stem of the tree leans in the direction of the house, but the upper canopy of the tree shows typical upright growth structure indicating that the original cause of the lean happened sufficient time ago for the canopy to right itself to a normal orientation. The angle of these branches and the stem create a reference point for comparison. And again, looking back through Google Street View, myself and my colleagues couldn't find a discernible change in the stem angle or the alignment of branches within the canopy from before and after the high wind. And in fact, looking even further back, we couldn't really see a discernible change for the last 10 years. So the conclusion we drew was that the tree has not recently moved, is not showing any indication of instability such that we think it requires removal on the grounds of safety. With regards to the damage to the mechanism of the electric gates by the tree's roots, we weren't provided with evidence within the Section 211 notice to indicate that the roots are the cause of the issue or that the gate can't be fixed with the tree in situ. The tree was subsequently assessed using the tempo method, a copy of which can be seen at Appendix B. What we found was a mature lime of reasonably large stature, part of an avenue of mature lime trees which line both sides of the Encliff Hall Avenue. The tree is therefore very prominent within the street scene and fully visible to the public. We found the tree to be in reasonable condition with no major outward defects. It leans, this is a common feature of many trees. And again, the upright nature of the canopy suggests that the cause of the lean is historic. The canopy of the tree has previously been pruned, it's responded reasonably well with regards to the amount of growth it's got. We thought that the tree, as a conservative estimate, would have a retention span of 20 years. We were being very conservative here because obviously the tree's going in the street, so it's in quite an inhospitable environment. The tree is part of an avenue of mature limes, similar in size and age and therefore important as an arboretural feature due to its cohesion. We felt that removal of a constituent part of the avenue should be resisted unless strictly necessary. With regards contributions to the conservation area, there's no recent appraisal which outlines the nature of the Encliff Conservation Area. However, lime avenues are considered important features of several conservation areas within the city. And through walking through the Encliff Hall area, I think that those trees significantly add to the look and the feel of the area. They add some form of consistency as well to a street where plots are set back and the houses very varied. We felt that such avenues of trees should be preserved where possible. With regards to tempo, the tree scored 17 points indicating that we thought that the tree had sufficient amenity to merit a TPO. It was therefore deemed expedient in the interest of amenity to make the tree subject to an order. We received one objection from the homeowner of 7A, which stated that the applicant had consulted with an arborist who recommended the tree be felled, that the tree's roots have raised the pavement, broken the gate mechanism and cracked the front garden wall. And that a council officer stated that the damage to the pavement was heat related damage, not root damage, and that this is incorrect. In response, we don't have evidence supplied with the Section 211 notice to indicate how the arborist has arrived at the conclusion that the tree is moving and therefore dangerous. This would typically take the form of a detailed inspection of the tree of the sort that has been conducted by the council's own officers. Following from a detailed inspection of the tree, an image comparison to identify changes in stem angle of branch alignment, the expert opinion of three arboreturalists employed by the councils that the tree is not in a dangerous condition such that removal is necessary. I do think that the damage to the pavement is caused by ingress of the tree's roots. I think that this is remediable without needing to remove the tree. I don't have recollection of stating any opinion that the damage is heat related. I just don't have recollection of stating that, but it's not consistent with something that I think I would say because I don't think it's heat related. I think the damage to the tarmac is very much from the growth of the roots. And finally, there's insufficient evidence to suggest that the tree is the cause of damage to the wall or gate and if so, it's possible that engineering solutions exist which could fix these issues without removing the tree. I'm not sure if we have a speaker today or not. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you Vanessa. I'm going to open it up to members' questions. I'm so sorry. Yes, this is the one we do have a speaker for and I didn't have the sheet in front of me. I believe it's Mr Andy Clayton, if you'd like to come to the microphone. On the table. Yeah, has the light come on? It's on the right side.
Thank you. This is a photo I took at 7:55 this morning. So this is the tree in question, if you won't mind passing that round. And thank you Vanessa, I appreciate everything you said, you know, and 90% of it is bang on, you know. And it is...
Before you go on, I should say you've got a maximum of five minutes to speak.
That's fine. So the tree in question, I looked at this morning and I don't think it actually warrants a TPO. The 20-year lifespan you put on it could be a little bit exaggerated, I think. I don't agree with the tempo. It's, it's, I didn't feel it was, it was judged in the right way. And I don't think that the photos from Street View actually took the full account of the tree because of the angle they were taken from. I know it's the conservation area. I believe that it should stay as it is and be monitored without a TPO. And anything that happens in the future, you'll be the first to know.
Is there anything you wish to add?
I don't think so. I think that's all I needed to say really.
Okay, if you'd like to switch off the, thank you for that, if you'd like to switch off the mic. I'm then going to open it up to members' questions. Roger?
Thank you Chair. It just seemed that, looking at these photographs, that all of them are at a different angle. And I just wonder, the last one looks a very severe angle. Can you tell me how you measured the angle? Because apparently it's not changed from, is it 30 degrees since 2019?
Thank you Roger. Again, I slipped up in the order, I should have given the officer a chance to respond. But I dare say she will also be able to answer your question as well. Vanessa, over to you.
Thank you. Just to, I'll just answer the question of the lean first. I think this is part of the problem, that when you measure a lean of a tree, what you ideally want to do is take a reference point on the trunk so that you can measure the lean over time, so that you're always going back to the same bit of the tree. So that would be one methodology. But obviously because I'm just responding to a Section 211 notice stating that the tree was intending to be felled, I don't have that kind of data going backwards. So all I've got is an examination of the tree to sort of see if we think there's any instability in the root plate, which would be typical of a tree leaving, so it was going to fall. And then looking back over Google Street imagery, which is really useful. And again, like I said, the alignment of the canopy is one really good way of measuring if you think a tree is moving because branches are typically in a certain orientation. What we can see going back 10 years is these branches haven't really moved. You know, the angle looks to be the same in the stem of the tree and the upright nature of the canopy appears to be consistent over the last 10 years. We obviously want to get this right, we don't want a TPO dangerous tree. And we've had three of our tree officers look at it as a result to kind of get, you know, that information. Going back to some of the points that Mr Clayton raised, like thank you for what you had to say. Just with regards to whether we think that the tree should be TPO'd or not, unfortunately if a Section 211 notice comes in stating that the tree is intended for removal, then I only have two options. I can either, well, three actually. I can say nothing, after which time the notice, it's deemed as if we don't object to the notice and then the owner has consent to felled the tree. Or we can object and TPO the tree. If we don't TPO the tree, then the Section 211 notice stands and it could be removed at any time. So that's why the TPO has been served because to not means that the tree could be removed. With regards to its amenity, I do sort of understand, I think, some of the points you were raising. The tree on its own is not, trees and avenues are never wonderful examples of open grown trees. They're always slightly suppressed. That's the nature of trees and avenues. However, relating back to a discussion, I think we've had about avenue trees before, the importance of trees and avenues is their cohesion and what happens to that arboreal feature once you start removing them piecemeal. Which is kind of why the tree received the assessment that it did under tempo is because part of its importance is this arboretural feature that it is a constituent part of. Thank you.
Thank you Vanessa. Barbara, you had a question?
Thank you Chair, there's two bits to it. First of all, looking at the Google Street Maps 2019 and 2022, I mean, I'm concerned about the canopy. I mean, you say that sort of the branches have uprighted themselves to counteract the lean, but the amount of canopy that seems to be leaning over the property compared to leaning across the roads suggests it's imbalanced. So the first thing is sort of, have you factored that in? And does that, because when I look down at the 2019 picture, the next but one further into the page is what I'd expect to see, a balanced canopy because of the way the branches have grown, so that's the first thing. And the second thing is, I accept that you say it's not a danger, but who has the liability if suddenly, say in the next storm, that dust come down? Is it the council or is it the homeowner? Thank you.
Yeah, the canopy does lean slightly towards the property, but as I've stated, the assessment of myself and two other arboretural officers is that the tree has begun to right itself. So what this is consistent with, I think we have to accept as well that trees do lean, it's a very normal feature. So we have to not have a knee-jerk reaction to removing trees that lean because if we do, we set a precedent that I don't think is kind of very helpful. I think that this tree has potentially either grown in response to the light or has shifted at some point. But the key thing for me is that the canopy has begun to right itself indicating that this has happened quite some time ago, which means that the tree isn't, you know, currently moving. I don't think that there's any evidence really put forward that convinces me that it's about to fall over. With regards to liability, I might ask Victoria to start stepping, she's probably better placed to state that than I am.
Victoria?
Thank you Chair. Just in terms of the tree, obviously the homeowner is responsible for maintaining a tree. And removing or doing works to a tree because it's a danger is an exception to a TPO. So it would be for the homeowner to maintain the tree and take any action necessary.
It's not quite what I meant, what I meant was, you know, we've had a statement that it should be signed. It's not expected to fall. If suddenly it does fall, say in six months' time, in the winter months, who's liable then because the homeowner has taken appropriate action in trying to sort of ask permission to do something with the tree? We've had the statement, it's not necessary. So in... And it's... You say it's a non-maintained road, therefore the tree's in the liability of the homeowner. So in this case, is that the case, that sort of even though our officers have made the statement it is sound, events might subsequently prove that was misleading? Who's liable in that situation?
As I say, going back to what I said, it's for the homeowner to maintain the tree. By making a TPO, the council doesn't take on any liability in respect of that. And what the officer is saying is that it's eligible for a TPO, which means it's, you know, it's expedient in the interest of immunity to make the TPO. And we don't have any evidence to say that it's dangerous. It's still for the homeowner to monitor that and to take any necessary action.
But if we have a TPO, does the homeowner have to ask permission to cut back the branches, which may, if you like, make it too lopsided and more of a threat than otherwise?
There is an exception in the regulations that allow for works to happen if there is a danger, an immediate danger. And they need to, you know, go through the notifiers afterwards. But it's still, much like any other tree, you'd still need to, you know, keep an eye on it and maintain it and take any necessary action.
I'll have to let it go because we've gone round in circles, but it doesn't really reassure me. It's always the owners on the homeowner. Okay, thank you.
Can I just add something? I mean, I do obviously take people's safety really seriously. I really wouldn't TPO the tree if I thought it was a risk. I know that the branches lean over the property, but many trees do lean. I don't think that it's lopsided to the extent that it may fall. So yeah, to reassure you that, you know, I took inspecting the tree quite seriously to make sure it was a tree that was worthy, in my opinion, of, you know, being TPO-able.
Before I bring Peter in, can I then just clarify with you, Vanessa, that any branches that overhang the property can reasonably be removed because they are... They're actually on the... Over the homeowner's territory?
A bit of a minefield, because we're getting into the sort of, there is an exception with regards to a TPO for actionable nuisance, and it's the question of whether overhanging branches fall under that exception. But generally speaking, if the TPO is confirmed, it would just require an application to be submitted for reduction or works to the tree. As long as that work's reasonable with regards to the amenity and health of the tree, there'd be no reason why we would say no.
Peter?
Well, you've probably covered it all. I was just trying to clarify what we actually agreed to, because this is an unadopted road. It belongs to the property owner. And I understand we're protecting the tree, but does that include all the branches as well? It seems to me... Who's going to keep their eye on it, in other words, whether he wants to do it? And if the property owner decides that's going to, I'll go and trim it back. Is that not possible?
I think what we have to bring it back to is, is it expedient in the interest of amenity to protect the tree? That's the matter that's before us today. Any subsequent application to prune the tree is perfectly possible, and that's governed by a separate application, which is also adjudicated by an independent body, so that the planning inspector. Really, I think the matter is, would the removal of this tree, which is, you know, what may happen if we don't confirm the order, would that have a significant detrimental impact on the amenity of the area?
I've got Ibi, and then after that, Gary.
Chair, I'm looking at the picture on page 39, Google Street View. He's leaning towards property, and also in reference to the photograph supplied by the speaker today. If I was the homeowner, I would also be naturally concerned. So I sympathise with the homeowner. But I'm reassured that three of our officers have assessed this tree. Therefore, I'm inclined to support our officers and their judgement.
So really, that was more of a comment. We're still in questions at the moment. So Gary, what's your question?
I'll use a comment to rant.
Thank you. Bernard?
It is a question. Can we be clear that the homeowner can apply to prune the tree?
Absolutely, yeah. Once the tree... If the tree is subject to TPO, absolutely, they can apply at any time to do any works to the tree, prune it, remove it. And that's subject to the council then issuing consent or refusing. And were the homeowner to object to the lack of consent, for example, they could then take that to appeal.
Thank you, Vanessa. I was going to move on to comments, but do you really want to ask another question on this?
I hope... Well, I hope it's a quick one. Sort of, what's the normal time delay between applying to prune it back or trim a branch between you receiving the application and the decision being made? Is it sort of quite quick?
Yeah, so the applications come through me principally. I'm the person that takes applications for consent to works to protected trees and makes recommendations. There's an eight-week timeframe, so that's the statutory timeframe that we have to respond. That gives us time for the notice to be out there in the public domain, for people to comment. But typically, we actually deal with those applications sooner than the eight weeks.
I meant it just, you know, if we have... If the TPO is there already and the homeowner... That's what you're talking about, eight weeks maximum?
Yeah, there's eight weeks, yeah. Okay. That's not decided by us. That's from, you know, government guidance in the Town and Country Planning Act.
Victoria?
Thank you, Chair. Just to reiterate that if there's an immediate risk of serious harm, then the work can happen to the tree straight away, and then the homeowner has to notify the council if that's the case. So there shouldn't be, you know, an issue until a danger in that eight-week period.
Okay, I will open it up to member comments, and I know Gary has got his hand up for that.
Yes, cheers, Chair. I think it will help some members. I mean, I've been on a few training courses for the TPOs, but I think the lack of knowledge on this is apparent. You know, at the end of the day, you just can't, you know, you say, this is my wall. I'm going to cut everything over what overhangs. Well, then the tree looks, you know, it doesn't look like a tree anymore. You've cut half of it off because it's been leaning over. So that's a big part. It's not dead, it's not diseased, it's not dying. So it don't fit anything. And at the end of the day, Veronica's turned around and asked two of her colleagues to come out and double-check what she's saying. You know, I think that's very nice to do that. And I'm going to be really supporting our officer's recommendation, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Bernard?
Yes, I shall be supporting the recommendation. I think on the strength that the tree evaluation method being used scores seventeen, which is pretty incisive. So I will be supporting it.
Okay. Peter?
Just, I mean, I must admit, I have some concerns looking at pictures, but I do trust our own officers, and there's more than one looked at it and have assured me that it's... That that tree is safe and won't blow down. So I think, given their letters down in the past, I'm going to buy the officer's recommendation, Chair.
Thank you for that, Peter. I will say with the colour photo, what is difficult to make sense of is which branches belong to the tree in the foreground against the tree that the applicant wants to remove. And that doesn't help. But when you look at the lean, it's almost as though the lean that's showing has been taken at the best possible position around the tree to emphasise the effect of that lean. But I think we also have to be mindful of what our officers are telling us on this tree preservation order today. So I'm going to ask members to move to a vote, starting with Alan.
Support the officer's recommendation, Chair.
Support the recommendation.
Yes, support, Chair.
Support, Chair.
Support, Chair.
I will be abstaining from this because I don't think I've got enough information to make a proper judgement, because the acute angle that we've seen on the latter photograph does worry me. Thank you.
Support, Chair.
Support, Chair.
Support, Chair. Thank you, members. That is carried with one abstention. Thank you, Mr Clayton, for coming along today. So we move on to item nine, applications under various acts and regulations. So is that for you, Victoria, to take us through, or is that coming from Chris? Over to you. I should say that it's on page forty-seven.
Thank you, Chair. So this application is the one at forty-seven Werlow Lane. And just get to the correct slides. It involves demolition of an existing dwelling and the erection of a replacement dwelling in its place. This is the site. I'll quickly go through the slides first. This is the site on Werlow Lane. It's outside, it's in a housing area, both in terms of its character, residential character, and as identified in the UDP. It falls outside the Werlow Conservation Area, which is to the north-west, just off the map there. So it's some distance from the conservation area. Werlow Lane is characterised by largely detached properties in large-sized plots with a very varied character. Our scenario photograph of the site, you can see that there are trees within the rear garden. And what is worth noting, probably easier to see on this map, is to the immediate sort of south-east, there is a group of properties known as Werlow Farm Mews, which I'll come back to. These are... I'll quickly flick through these, because there are a lot of them. These are images of, taken from within Werlow Farm Mews. The stone-built properties you see here are Werlow Farm Mews, which are residential properties subdivided from original buildings. So again, just quickly flicking through these, because there are a lot of them, and it's just to give a bit of context, and I can come back to them as necessary. This, the one, the image top right is worth noting, because that's taken from within the application site. And the stone garage block to the neighbouring property is where the... It is the forward extent of the new dwelling. So you can see the existing dwelling, which is the white rendered building, top right image. When that's demolished and the new property is built in its place, it would slide forward to the... As near as can be, that front corner of that garage block. Which, again, can be seen in the bottom left-hand image. Again, the white rendered property is the existing property, which is a nineteen-thirties detached dwelling, which whilst reasonably attractive, is not of any sufficient architectural merit for us to resist its demolition as a principle. So that part of the assessment, we feel, is acceptable. The bottom right-hand image, you can note that there is... That's the existing house again, with a vehicle entrance point. That is being moved slightly up the hill in the new scheme, with the vegetation immediately behind the wall and the wall removed, reduced accordingly. This image is of the nearest element of number four Werlow Farm Mews, which can be viewed... That image is taken by holding a camera above an existing inbound fence, but it's very close to where the new dwelling would be. So the layout here, you can just about pick out, hopefully, the red outline shows the existing form of the dwelling, which, and the replacement is the grey. You'll see from that that the width of the footprint is almost identical to what's there at the moment, but that the building is larger overall and has moved towards the Werlow Lane frontage. The green rectangle, sort of partway down the garden, is an annex with a link to it for an outbuilding which includes a swimming pool. These are a series of images that show its relationship. This is the... So this is the design of the property. It's over four floors. You can actually only see sort of three of them there, because the fourth is effectively in the basement, which appears in views of the rear. The four floors being the basement or lower ground floor, ground floor, first floor, and then accommodation within the roof space. The top-left image there gives you an impression of the appearance it would have in the street scene, albeit filtered by existing vegetation and to-be-planted vegetation. There's the side elevation which faces the property up the hill. And that is the side elevation, which is adjacent to number four Werlow Farm Mews, again with the red showing the outline of the existing dwelling. The additional bulk that you see there, both in terms of height and to the right-hand end of the image, is towards the front of the site, where it has no significant impact on the property at number four. And that's of the area, as I say, you see more of the basement or lower ground floor there, particularly here where there's a section which is taken from almost the terrace locations, the sort of sunken terrace locations. And again, that's a slightly more detailed street scene image. There are a number of layout slides showing the various sort of rooms within the building, up to a roof plan at the end. So I think maybe I will go back to... Sorry, to the site layout, and just hold that there while I talk through one or two things. So the existing dwelling is a four-bedroom nineteen-thirties property, as I mentioned. The new dwelling's contemporary appearance, the main material is red brick with stone features and zinc cladding, red-grey tiles with the three prominent cable features that you saw there. It's accommodated six bedrooms with a double garage and external frontage parking in the sort of salmon colour there. The frontage parking and turning area, which exists at present, is being enlarged or relocated, and that necessitates a reduction in the tree buffer to the front of the site. But the key species, which involve primarily two large oak trees, remain with new native planting to enhance biodiversity within the areas adjacent. The majority of trees on the site are retained. There were tree surveys undertaken identifying eighteen trees. Twelve of those are retained. The removal has been due... The six have been removed due to position or health, and there are, where possible, replacements being provided. Overall, we feel that the character of the property, whilst different, clearly different to what's there at the moment, it's acceptable in the street scene. It's a very varied street scene. it's acceptable in the street scene. It's a very varied street scene. There's interest in the elevations, so we feel that that's something we can support. The key issue has been the impact on the living conditions of the neighbours, particularly number four Wirlo Farm Mews. So throughout the process, officers did raise concerns with aspects of the scheme, including the overbearing impact of the original design and of negotiated amendments that we now consider maintain acceptable living conditions for that neighbour. And with that went into all of them in great detail, principally they involve reducing the rear projections that are close to the boundary, reducing and slightly relocating them, and reducing the form of the gable feature closest to number four. We have received some path analyses that show additional levels of overshadowing, but not to a point which we would consider harmful to amenity, not impacting on key areas of those dwellings next door. And there aren't any issues relating to loss of privacy due to either the orientation of the rooms or the use of privacy screens where necessary. There's no significant ecology value on site, although the preliminary report did suggest further surveys for bats before any demolition. And you'll see that there is a condition within the recommended conditions. I think it's number five, I'm just checking, number six? It's number six there. That requires two surveys. One of them's already been carried out and revealed no presence of bats, and the second is due to take place within a matter of days. And we took the view that we could deal with it by condition because of the limited potential identified in the preliminary assessment. So we're satisfied with the proposals and the level of impact that they have. We feel it's an acceptable form of dwelling, as I mentioned, and no significant impact on neighbours. The highway safety issues have been considered of relocation of the access, and it's a minor relocation, which is again considered acceptable. The tilted balance does apply, given it represents housing, but in the context of an absence of a five-year supply, albeit provision in this case is of a sort of a larger replacement form rather than additional housing. There are minor benefits from the scheme of improved accommodation and efficiency and some economic activity during construction, et cetera. And there are no significant adverse impacts to outweigh those benefits. So our conclusion and recommendation therefore, Chair, is to approve the application, subject to conditions. And at that point, if I can just refer Members to the supplementary information, because there are two additional ones which just reflect the approved plans and to ensure that the tree protection measures are in place and no further tree removals other than those indicated. So there's two conditions there, Chair.
Thank you, Chris. Shall I open it up to Members' questions? Bernard?
Thank you very much for your presentation, Chris. It's been very clear all along how you're presenting this. Has an environmental impact of this being, development being done? I mean, the entire operation of knocking down the building, taking the material away, and then coming back again and building a new building? Is that a permissible question under the new planning?
Chair, an environmental impact assessment would be something that's undertaken for much, much larger projects of almost kind of strategic importance. So the simple answer to the question is no, not in this case. And we don't have legislative or policy requirement to request that on an application of this scale.
Thank you.
So my second question is, if it should go ahead, could we have a condition of bat boxes and swift boxes on the building? I think there's a general, seems to be a general feeling that many committee members that this is a requirement we should be going in.
Bernard? I think you mean swift bricks, bricks that you would put in near the eaves.
It can be either.
Chair, that is part of the applicant's proposal that's indicated on several of the drawings, et cetera, their intentions with regard to biodiversity, which include identified locations for bat and bird, including swift boxes, and other features within the planting, such as particularly native species planting. But there's also, to secure the detail of that and the management of that, there is a condition which is condition number four that would secure it.
Peter? Just quickly, we granted permission for seventeen houses back in 2016, which is now obviously elapsed. How does this differ?
Peter, I think you're looking at the next application, not the current one. It's all right, we've all done it. Glynn's?
Yeah, when you look at the plan, it is a really large house. There doesn't seem to be enough parking space to me. How many cars could they get on there? Because if they have to go out onto that street, it is very narrow, and it would cause a nuisance to the neighbours.
Chair, it is a very narrow lane. The garage and the two car parking spaces identified on the plan would allow for four vehicles. It's a six-bedroom property, but four vehicles is quite a large provision. And there is also further space available within the site. So we feel that that's a reasonable level of provision. I don't know if Mark wants to add any more to that.
Yeah, the parking spaces are orientated such that they can all be moved independently. There's no cars blocking each other in, so those four spaces are really well usable.
Chris, is there a more close-up of that part of the plan? Because that's what possibly Members can't fully grasp.
There isn't, I'm afraid. I can go and point to where the spaces are if that would help.
Do Members want that? No, you're all right, Chris.
I'll simply say then that they're in the top left-hand corner between the two retained oak trees and the front northerlymost corner of the building.
We did, of course, have access to the, to that which we could have brought up on our laptops ahead of the meeting. Any more questions? Then I'll move it on to comments.
Roger. Thank you, Chair. Now, it's always a dilemma when houses are going to be pulled down. And following Bernard's point about the effect on the ecology, the thing that would sway me is the, rather than the short term, is the long-term sustainability. And if we look at page sixty-five, I think there's enough in there to support this in both legal and environmental terms. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Roger. Okay, if there are, oh, Peter.
Yeah, I've no problem with this. That's why I've moved on to the next Peter. No, I fully support the offer of recommendations here. I think it's an improvement.
Okay, I will put that to the vote, starting with Alan.
Support the officer recommendation, Chair.
I won't be supporting this on the grounds that I feel that the environmental impact of actually knocking a building down, carting all the materials away, building a new, needs to be factored into everything we do now we face climate change, chaos ahead of us. If that's not allowable, I would say that it's overdevelopment.
Thank you, Bernard.
Support, Chair.
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 That motion is carried with one vote against. Thank you, Chris, for that. Moving on to item nine B on page sixty-nine. That's the land between the railway tracks and Junction Road at Woodhouse Sheffield thirteen. And this is with Michael. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair. Apologies. Good afternoon, Chair, thank you. So this is a full planning application for the development of nineteen houses on a site in Woodhouse, down Junction Road. So Junction Road is an unadopted road after June Road. So the purpose of this presentation is just to provide Members with some information on the site and the development, and then briefly go through some of the key issues. It's not to supplement or amend anything in the committee report unless otherwise stated. So first of all, I'll just go through the site and then particularities of the development, and then go on to the key issues. So the site is before you on the screen. This is the OS plot layout. The site's about 1.5 hectares, but only a little over a third of it's proposed to be developed for housing. The site is partly what we'd call previously developed land. Sorry, I can't point, but the southeastern portion, the bit that looks clearer, was former railway sidings with the railway line running to the, parallel with the north-eastern boundary. And then the area to the north-west is woodland and would remain as such. So there's also a strip of woodland running along the railway boundary. So the woodland areas we classify as greenfield, the element that was the former scrapyard and railway sidings we classify as brownfield, albeit it has been subject to significant regeneration, at the point where the regeneration has obliterated all physical remains. We would consider it to become greenfield, but it hasn't quite reached that point yet. So on this slide, you can also see Junction Road. So it runs down from the north-west, from the adopted highway near Woodhouse Station. The section you can see on the screen is the unadopted section. It becomes adopted just off-screen to the north-west. It's adopted at that point because it's, at that point, it's full highway standard, so a five-metre approximately carriageway with footway provision either side. The section on the further down to the site is not to adopt all standards, so it doesn't have footway provision. It's narrower than standard, and the geometry isn't straight. This doesn't necessarily mean it's an unsafe road, it just means one that we would not accept on the council maintenance schedule because it's not too standard. So this is a photo of Junction Road looking to the north-west from the end of the site, what would have become the end of the site. Just to the right-hand side of the photo, you can see a small railway depot, and you can see the condition of the road. So it's obviously got the character of a country lane. There is some street lighting. The surface is fine, but as I said, there's no footway provision and the width is less than standard. So this is another photo, just looking at Junction Road. You can see existing properties to the left of the photo. Generally, properties on Junction Road are characterised by long front gardens with some, many properties with some parking, and then the property is well set back. It's also generally tree-lined, a large proportion of it. And these are the properties adjacent to the site. So you can see one property's got a garage, another driveway, and well-set-back properties. So this is just a little further up Junction Road, looking north-west again, just before where the former access came down to the scrapyard. And then this is the former access to the scrapyard. It's a little difficult to make out, but essentially it ramped down slightly from Junction Road, and some skips were just left to block access. And then this is on the site itself. On the left of the photo, you can see the strip of birch woodland running along the railway line, which is an ecological corridor, allowing connectivity between different green spaces. On the right, as you can see, there is some regeneration on the site. These photos were taken before the summer, so it's less verdant than you saw on the site visit. But you can still see the regeneration, including poplar tree. It's probably the most prominent tree you can see on the right in the development area. So this is just looking back to the end of the site again. You can see some hard standing on the site and then the small railway depot. And then this is looking from the site across the railway line and across the strip of birch woodland. And then this is actually within the main area of woodland to the north-west, which will be retained in, and this is the trodden path that's been farmed. Local residents effectively use it as an amenity. So Junction Road connects to the existing open space on the western, southwestern periphery of Woodhouse. But also, this space is also used informally, albeit technically it's probably trespassing, but there's clearly a trodden route on it. And a lot of locals clearly enjoy the space and take notice of the different species of flora and fauna that you can see in this area. The woodland's obviously predominated by birch, but does have some other species within it, and it's generally semi-mature. So that was a description of the site. I'll just briefly take you through the main particularities of the development now. Sorry, it's buzzing a bit. Anyway, so this is the red outline site plan. So as you can see, the site goes up to the, goes all the way, all over the area I've described, and also over the section of Junction Road adjacent to the site. There's a small section you can see, blue outlined, that was taken out of the red line at the request of local residents, because they were concerned that that covered the very end of their gardens, which I think was historically verge on Junction Road, but had become functionally part of the gardens. So the developer agreed to take it out of the red line and made an offer to gift the land back to the residents. That wouldn't be part of the planning approval if it was approved. It's separate land ownership matter. So this is the site plan. It's for nineteen dwellings, as you can see. Nine of the properties would front onto Junction Road, the nine properties to the southeast. Bottom right, as you can see on the slide, the other ten would be accessed off two very small cul-de-sacs. And you can see the retention of the large majority of the woodland along the boundary of the railway and within the main woodland area to the north-west, albeit there would be some slight encroachment into the woodland. It basically would be chopped off slightly sharp, just where the properties end. So that was, sorry, this is, so this is the currently proposed site layout. Just for reference, and potentially in anticipation of the question that just asked, this is the previous site layout plan. So in 2016, there was a previous consent for seventeen houses on the site, which has now lapsed. So, sorry, it's a little hard to refer one to the other because this includes the full site, whereas this just includes the housing area. But essentially, it was a very similar footprint of development, albeit it stopped a little shorter of the woodland to the north-west than the current proposal. Essentially, they've put in two extra properties. put in two extra properties and that's slightly, encroached slightly further into the woodland, albeit there's not what we would consider a very significant additional loss of woodland. So this isn't a plan for consideration currently, it's just for context. And then I'll just take you through the main house types. There's four different house types. So there's two affordable houses proposed as part of the current application, which is also a difference from the 2016 consent, which didn't propose any affordable housing. So the two of the property, these are the two affordable properties that you can see. They would be at the south-eastern end of the site, three-bed properties, 99 square metre in floor area. And this is another of the property type. Sorry, I'll move this a little closer. And then this is one of the others. You can see projecting gables. It's a fairly, I'd say benign, unobjectionable design. We asked for them to reconsider initial designs that had some render features to make them more contextually relevant. So they removed the render, added some more detail in terms of string coursing and soldier courses at heads, at windowheads, which we considered to be relatively contextually harmonious. And then this is the last house type design, which we generally feature on the cul-de-sacs. And then this is just a street scene. There's a slight error on this drawing that's now been rectified at the far right-hand end. So this is a section all the way along what you'd see along Junction Road. So the house on the far right, as part of it's been obscured with just a polygon that shouldn't be there. Those are two affordable dwellings, but I've got a paper drawing if anyone wants to see it with that rectified. But other than that, that's essentially how the composition of the development in the street. So that's the conclusion, first part of my presentation, which just described the site and the development. And I'll just briefly go through some of the key matters that is set out in the report. So it's a full planning application. The recommendation is to approve subject to conditions of section 106 agreement. The site, as I say, is partly greenfield, partly brownfield, and within the existing settlement of Woodhouse. The previous consent for 17 houses, it's now elapsed. There's been 20 objections received on the application, including from Clive Betts MP, with the main issues raised being the traffic impact of the additional 19 dwellings in terms of intensification of traffic on what I've already described as a substandard access, the ecological impact of the potential interference with the existing woodland and the loss of the mosaic of habitats on the site itself, land quality issues associated with potential contamination and the farmer mine workings on the site, potential flooding issues and amenity issues, both associated with loss of privacy of the facing existing properties, and also the informal use of the site itself as an open space. So in terms of the planning assessment, we consider the development to be acceptable in principle because it's, the housing development is mainly confined to previously developed land and it is within a housing area on the new development plan. The new plan, the Sheffield Plan, which is about to be submitted to Secretary of State for examination, also proposes the site as an allocated housing site, but we cannot yet attach any significant weight to that allocation. However, in the current plan context, it's also supported for housing being within a wider housing area. The housing mix is considered to be acceptable. It's a mix of approximately half and half, three beds and four beds, with policy compliant to the units, being for affordable housing. The street housing market assessment essentially says this part of Sheffield is a good opportunity to provide for reasonably more affordable family housing, and this is what the scheme would do. In terms of the traffic impact, essentially the assessment is the same as was made for the previous 17 unit scheme, albeit there'd be two additional units that wouldn't, in traffic terms, wouldn't be materially different. Essentially, the officers accept that it's not an ideal situation with a housing site taking access off an unadopted road. However, the traffic, we would consider the traffic impact would not be severe or significant. I think the character of the road is such that people generally slow their speeds. Anyone driving along there would be likely to encounter people walking along the carriageway. This is commonplace currently. And essentially, we do not consider there's a good case to say that additional 19 dwellings in this section of Junction Road would lead to a severe traffic impact, which is what's required in order to sustain refusal on highways, grounds. Generally, we consider that the additional traffic would be absorbed into the comings and goings on Junction Road without materially affecting the traffic conditions. I think the more the material effect would be changing the character of this part of the road because the applicant prefers it to provide, to basically upgrade this section closer to adoptable standards with a footway on the development side. So residents would effectively have an off-carriageway, means of getting up and down along the site frontage, and then would go back on to the carriageway. So there would be some change in character. However, overall, it's considered that even though it would only be a section of footway provided, that that is beneficial and outweighs the harm to the character of Junction Road as currently. So overall, the traffic impact's considered acceptable. There's an acceptable level of parking, at least two spaces for each dwelling, majority have three, including the garage. In terms of ecological impact, there would be some ecological impact. The scheme generally retains the majority of the substantial woodland along the railway and within the north-western area, which is well-kept. However, there would be a loss of three individual mature or semi-mature trees, including an ash, a sycamore and a poplar, and also a loss of three groups of trees and some encroachment into the woodland, which is birch woodland, but which also includes some other species. So there would be some tree loss. There would be some opportunity to compensate for that within the development scheme through new tree planting. However, that opportunity would be relatively limited due to the space demands required of the new dwellings. In terms of biodiversity issues, so looking at the current habitat areas of woodland and mosaic brownfield habitat, they equate to, using the DEFRA metric, to 10.8 hectares. The applicants estimated this would reduce to 7.4 hectares due to the building of the development, taking account of what could be provided on-site. So there'd be a deficit of 3.4 habitat units. So, sorry, 10.8 habitat units, down 7.4 habitat units. That would lead to a deficit of 3.4 habitat units, which is a 31% loss. Unfortunately, it's not possible to further bolster this on-site. The applicant has extensively explored opportunities for off-site improvements. They worked for the Sheffield and Rotherham Wildlife Trust, but unfortunately weren't able to identify opportunities within the immediate locality for biodiversity enhancement to compensate for onsite loss. However, our ecology team have said that they are able to provide, compensate for that loss through planting or other provision of other habitats within surplus parkland within the city area. And they've calculated that they could provide that at a cost of £25,000 per habitat unit. So the total cost to the developer would be £85,000, and the developer has agreed to that. And the recommendation is to be subject to a section 106 agreement, which would require the developer to pay that cost and also provide the two units as affordable housing. In terms of land quality issues, the developers undertook quite extensive surveys to try and establish the location of potential mineshaft on the site. It's also done preliminary contamination assessments. Effectively, they've satisfied the coal authority to subject to further intrusive investigations and also our own land quality officers. So there's not considered to be any reason to refuse planning permission on land quality grounds. So overall, the development scheme is supported. It would provide much-needed new family housing within the city in the context of the lack of a five-year housing land supply. So the recommendation is to grant subject to conditions set out in the officer report and also subject to section 106 agreement. It's a current £85,000 biodiversity net gain contribution and two of the units to be affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. So we have one speaker today who's going to speak in favour of the application, and that's Rachel Reeney, if you'd like to come to the desk.
Good afternoon, members. My name is Rachel.
I should have said you've got five minutes to speak. Thank you.
My name is Rachel Reeney, and I am speaking on behalf of the applicant, Canstead Limited. It's recognised and accepted that we are in the midst of a housing crisis, with both parties agreeing that there is a need for private and affordable housing within Sheffield, a position, as your officer noted before, based on the fact that the council are unable to demonstrate a five-year housing land supply. As members will be aware, the weight that should be given to the need for housing should be substantial, given the lack of supply. In response to the above, the proposal will deliver 19 new homes in the settlement limits of Woodhouse. Historically, 17 dwellings were approved. This application includes two affordable homes, which was not proposed previously, with the same layout adopted. As outlined within your officer's thorough and detailed report, the proposal accords with the development plan on land recognised as previously developed and located within a housing policy area. The site has also secured a draft allocation for housing in the emerging local plan for Sheffield, and the site is not allocated as open space and did not meet the requirements of an open mosaic habitat. The principle of development is therefore accordance with the policy. The proposal also maintains the previously approved approach of retaining the woodland to the north-west and the majority of birch woodland along the railway corridor. Tree loss has been kept to a minimum, as requested by officers, with no trees to be lost from the recognised tree preservation order. Importantly, this approach has been accepted by officers as a reasonable balance to facilitate development of a brownfield site for much-needed housing. We are aware that there are a number of residents concerned with the loss of biodiversity on-site. As part of this application, detailed surveys, including additional bat and invertebrate surveys, were submitted, and 10% biodiversity net gain achieved through an agreed contribution, an approach which followed the Environmental Acts mitigation hierarchy. The high-level surveys, as recognised by officers, confirm that thorough appropriate mitigation can be, which can be conditioned, residential development can be delivered. The design team also undertook a specific assessment of potential disturbance from the adjacent network rail depot. Combined surveys confirmed that the noise levels are acceptable, as agreed with your environmental health officer. Since the submission of the application in December 2022, the design team have been liaising with the coal authority to provide information on the presence of a mineshaft on-site alongside its zone of influence. Through the submission of further technical evidence, it has been confirmed that any stability risk can be addressed through capping, grouting, with ground surveys confirming that the proposed houses do not fall within the zone of influence. As such, the coal authority have removed their objection and have suggested suitably worded conditions which have been agreed by the applicant. On design matters, the proposal is policy compliant and complements the existing street scene. The number of houses also reflects the semi-rural nature of the site, as recognised by officers, with brick wall and front gardens offering soft transition to Junction Road. On highway matters, planning and highway officers raise no objection to the proposal, with your officer's report confirming that the proposal does not create severe highway safety problems. Therefore, it would be unreasonable to resist the application on this basis. Following communications with councillor Betts, the design team has also engaged with local residents along Junction Road, who have been utilising land in the ownership of the applicant's private garden space and/or for the parking of their cars. The applicant has offered the opportunity for a transfer of ownership should planning permission be granted. I note that we have legal representatives engaged to start this process. Importantly, all other matters relating to drainage, amenity, land contamination, sustainability and flood risk have been agreed. To conclude, we welcome your officer's recommendation to approve this application based on its compliance with the development plan, need for housing due to shortfall in the five-year housing land supply, and the social, economic and environmental benefits of the scheme, which are all to be secured via condition. The development is therefore considered acceptable in principle and should be approved. Thank you very much for your time for listening to me.
Thank you, Rachel. And you still had half a minute to spare. Thank you for that. So I'm opening it up to members' questions, and I saw Roger's hand go up quite early on.
Thank you, Chair. I must say, the site visit was very useful yesterday, put it into perspective. It's always difficult to see from photographs the lay of the land and so on. And I wouldn't have got the same perspective looking at those photographs today as I did from the visit itself. One of the things, I think that where the housing ends, there is to be an ecological site or woodland where people can still visit. Who is maintaining that, or is it in the hands of nature?
Michael, do you want to answer that? Thank you, Chair. So the woodland is privately earned and would remain as such, and effectively the public access to it, which, again, the developer has offered to continue to provide and will be one of the planning conditions, I can direct you to which one, would require that access to be provided and maintained. In terms of the maintenance of the woodland, that wasn't, there was no requirement in the conditions in front of you to maintain that woodland. The view taken by officers was, isn't necessarily necessary in planning terms to have a maintenance requirement. Obviously, currently, it's fairly unmanaged birch woodland. However, I've discussed this with the applicant following the site visit, and they've indicated they would be agreeable to a condition for a woodland management plan. So I have, and I've prepared some wording accordingly. So if members would, if that's part, if members would like to see that, that can form part of the resolution, and I can read out what I would consider to be suitable wording through woodland management plan.
Are you going to do that now or wait?
Right, so taking that as Roger's proposal. Sorry, yeah, you proposing and Gary seconding? Oh, this is in addition? We'll come on to affordable homes in a bit.
Yeah, I don't think you'd vote on it, but I'll just, at this point, but I'll just read out the wording. So it would be a new condition, condition 26. So it would say, and then with subsequent conditions renumbered. So it'd say that no part of the development shall be brought into first use or occupation until a woodland management plan for the retained woodland areas, including provisions for the maintenance slash creation of one or more woodland glades, as been submitted to and approved by the local planning authority. Thereafter, the retained woodland shall be managed in accordance with the provisions of the approved woodland management plan. And the reason for that would be an interest in mitigating the ecological impact to the development and enhancing the biodiversity of the site.
Members happy with that?
I'm happy with that.
We've had a proposer and seconder, so can we have a show of hands on that proposal? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Gary, you got a question?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. There's a couple. Michael, you mentioned contaminated land on the site. When I was a lad, not a long time ago, in the 70s, I visited that site quite regularly. Went to the scrapyard, you know, and it was contaminated then. And I just wondered, is anything on record that that's been cleaned up since that? And I just, when the piece, when Rachel was talking, she said about the land of the bike's going to be a gift if we pass it, of course. If it's passed today, the owner's going to pass that land over to the men, those houses at the back there. But they've all got deeds and it's cost money. Who's going to pick that bill up? You know, because everybody's got, it might take about 10 hours, they might have a, you know, who's going to get a piece of land gifted to them? But it's going to be put on the deeds. So who's going to pay for that? Thanks.
Michael?
Okay. So in terms of first issue, contamination, there isn't record that it's been cleaned up. And if, when you go on site, there's clearly made ground there. Obviously, I think, the majority of contamination sources associated with scrapyard have been removed, but there could be a legacy. removed, but there could be a legacy in the ground. So the applicant's done a desk study, risk assessment, which effectively says that they need to do further testing of the ground. The likely remediation that would be required would be a cover system, so potentially six hundred mil of cover with a geotechnical breaker and maybe cap, but there are technical solutions to that contamination. You know, there may need to be some hotspot removal. At this point, they don't know, but their contaminator land consultant is very confident that there are solutions there, subject to specifically understanding what's in the ground. In terms of the land ownership issue, I'm kind of tentative to say too much about that because it's entirely outside of the realm of planning, so it's effectively a goodwill thing between the applicant and the existing residents that came out because of the planning consultation. So my understanding is that any resident wishing to acquire that land from the applicant would be subject to their paying their own legal costs, albeit there wouldn't be a cost to the land. However, that's, don't take that as read because it's not controlled in any way through the planning. There's no development proposed on that land through the planning. That side of the road would be left exactly as it is. It's only the development side that would have the new footway. So that's just for information and is entirely irrelevant to the planning decision, but my understanding is they would have to pay the legal costs.
Bernard?
Two points. The first one is the woodland management plan and it's continuing, you know, continuing to do the management. Is that going to be, that cost going to be borne by the developer?
It would, yes. It would be an ongoing requirement through planning conditions, so potentially enforceable by breach of condition notice.
Thank you. And the other one is, well, several really, is from page seventy, pre-commencement conditions. There seems to be quite a lot of them, and they've not yet been done. You know, they're saying that these need to happen, like a full ecological survey, existing trees need to be properly surveyed. There seems to be a lot here that needs to be done before this can be given the go-ahead. Could we not defer this decision until those have been done, so we know exactly what we're dealing with here? I wouldn't like to go ahead, for example, with the issue with drainage, for example, where it said that in a flood, there is no, there's not sufficient capacity in the system, basically, to cope with a large amount of water.
Bernard, I think this is fairly standard for a brownfield site where we've got some more major development going on. I don't think it's reasonable to request a deferral when all those things are effectively conditions before the actual building work can begin. I think that's a fair comment.
I would agree, it would be routine to condition the majority of those matters. I would say as well, in terms of a lot of them, there has been information submitted, it's just it's not quite at a point where it can be finalised. Such as the drainage, there is quite a detailed drainage strategy. It's just our drainage team would usually ask for a condition anyway to allow for further specificity. So it's basically knowing how much water they need to store on the site, they know that they can recreate greenfield runoff rates, subject to floodwater storage on the site and flow control into the sewer. So effectively, there should be no additional load in on the sewer, subject to enough storage being provided on site. The full details of that and all the sustainable drainage measures are not, they're not fully resolved at this point, which is why the drainage condition is on, but it's not that we don't understand how the site can be drained. And in terms of ecological surveys, they have done a lot of the further survey work recommended in their habitat, phase-one habitat report, such as invertebrate survey and bat survey. I think that the main thing outstanding is some further reptile surveying, and just our ecological officer, Chris Smith, just hasn't given the final sign-off on the survey work, which effectively says there should not be an impact on invertebrates and bats subject to mitigation. So it's just private reassurance, there is substantial information submitted in those areas, and the conditions might look alarming, but there's a lot of background work gone on in relation to those matters.
That's it, that seems fair enough. Thank you very much. Is there any other questions? Cliff?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, from the site visit yesterday, I was impressed that access is via quite a long, very narrow lane, and I hear what has been said about it being regarded as adequate. I'm struggling to accept that. You know, if you get two vehicles, you know, facing each other, you know, there's not much by way of passing points, and, you know, you can't see from one end of the lane to the other. Would we accept this if this was a public road, or is it, you know, is there something different? Because it's not a public road, you know, different standards.
Just to clarify, it is a public highway, it's just not adopted and maintained at the public expense. I think the issue here is obviously that it's a substandard road, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's unsafe road, and there's no significant accident record on it, because people generally, so although, obviously, if you designed something from scratch, you wouldn't design it as that road, but people adapt their driving style to suit the road generally, and the planning test is whether a development would result in a traffic impact which would be a severe impact and be prejudicial to highway safety. Our view is that it doesn't, in this instance, my colleague might be able to offer more or expand more on this.
Yeah, Chair. I went out this morning to, I was attending committee, I had a site visit myself, and there are a number of passing places for the cars to pull over and let oncoming vehicles move on. It was about twelve o'clock when I had my site visit, and I was there for fifteen minutes or so, there were no other vehicle movements, just a couple walking their dog, very, very quiet. I think the scale of the development's a factor as well, it's nineteen houses, which I anticipate possibly generates somewhere in the order of fourteen two-way movements in the morning and evening peak period. The road itself currently serves, I estimate, looking at Google Maps, something like thirty, thirty dwellings, so people are used to walking along the road there and vehicular activity. It happens now, and I think the scale, it goes back to the National NPPF and paragraph one hundred and eleven with the severity issue, and we just don't feel that it passes the test for refusal, if you like, in terms of creating a severe safety concern, even though it isn't the greatest access.
Perhaps I can add, yesterday, on the site visit, we saw a speed limit sign on the road. I'm not sure whether that's twenty miles per hour or thirty miles per hour, but I don't think it was forty. It's a twenty mile an hour speed limit, so drivers know what speed they should be doing, so they should be able to brake in order to pass at suitable places. If there are no more questions, I will move it to comments.
I'm sorry, yes, you did have your hand, and I've written your name down too. No, I mean, I looked at that, and I was reassured to see the statement on page ninety-two, ninety-three, about June Road, where you're anticipating development of that top section, which would bring that two hundred and fifty metres up to standard. But my question is, have you got anything substantial to say about proposed development, so that this is only a short-term problem, this two hundred and fifty metres that will be substandard, or is it just sort of hope rather than sort of based on thin air?
So the recommendation isn't based on hope, it's based on an assumption that the current situation will persist forever, because we can't assume anything else. However, it, see, there is a, there is some possibility that Junction Road will be brought up to adopt the standards. So the new plan allocates a housing site further to the north-west, so there's basically this site, and then there's a kind of a missing section behind the housing and the compound that's used by the sports team, and then there's another allocated housing site there. There's also plans further south, there was at one point larger plans in the unitary development plan for housing at that point, which, and it was envisaged there might be a connectivity route along Junction Road that basically resolved the problem and bring it all up to, so sorry, I'm waffling a bit, but the long and short of it is, I don't think you can assume that, and we don't assume, that Junction Road will be brought up to adopt the standard at any particular point, however, we hope it will be resolved as part of the, as part of local plan allocations, but we can't assume it, and we're not basing recommendation on that.
That's right, thank you. I wish I hadn't asked that because my mind's boggling at what could happen. Thank you.
Well, I think all our minds could boggle at what could happen, but we have to deal with the application that's before us, don't we? Are there any more questions? In that case, I will move it to comments. Roger?
Thank you, Chair. It's a very, very interesting development. One of the first things that we saw was that it had been used for a dumping ground, at least at the beginning, before where the proposed houses are supposed to be. So that, I think, would indicate that larger vehicles have been going down there and dumping stuff down. Now, I hope that that will stop with building, with this development, if we pass it today, and that will make it a nicer place. In fact, I think the whole development could make this place nicer, and the trees that face the railway track remain untouched and will be a screening point anyway for the noise and also for privacy. So I think, apart from, we're all worried perhaps a little bit about the narrowness of the road, but apart from that, I think this should be a development that we should welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Peter?
You pinched my words. I was going to say, this is a nice development. It's not been overdone, they're not trying to overdevelop it. It's a big improvement on what's there now, especially when it was the old scrapyard, and didn't see single planning grounds for turning it down, so I fully support the recommendations, Chair. I think it's good development.
Thank you, Peter. Bernard?
Yes, having visited the site yesterday, I was very struck by it being a brownfield site, and I know the council's now positioned on brownfields, so it's been developing on those. I was very struck how biodiverse that site was, and I noticed in the report, we've got page ninety-four at the top of that page, it says, this is an ecologically sensitive site, given that it clearly possesses high biodiversity value and has a strategically important location, sited on the Nature Recovery Network. So, you know, it has enormous, enormous importance, so therefore, I think we do need to stress if we give support to this, that these conditions are made quite clear. I'd just like to remind you, we're going to put, if we can insist that swift bricks are fitted and bat boxes are fitted, that those swifts and those bats actually need a food source, and that food source doesn't necessarily come from trees, it comes from insects, and it comes from the habitat that we create. Therefore, that's why, you know, it's good that we've got this woodland management scheme. It will provide that source of food. I'd just remind people that swifts carry back to their nests, on average, five grams of food, or twenty thousand sky-snatched invertebrates every day. You know, that's a huge amount, so we do need to make sure that we've got a good range of habitat there, so that there is something there for them to eat, and that's more important in many ways than having more trees. Thank you.
The bat boxes. Ooh, the creatures just like when they bat so.
Some of us also got to see the pictures of the swifts taking insects in mid-flight on Springwatch a few months ago. Could we put that in as a condition?
Here's one I've prepared earlier. So I've got a, so for condition sixteen, suggests, so that already requires bird and bat boxes, however, I felt from the discussion, it seems that members would feel more confident in it if it was more specific, and also included swift bricks. So the second sentence of condition sixteen currently says, unless otherwise approved, the scheme shall make provision, so this is for a biodiversity enhancement scheme, so unless otherwise approved, the scheme shall make provision for supplemental planting within the woodland areas to be retained within the site, hedgehog highways through garden fences, and the provision of bird and bat boxes to be incorporated within their houses slash garages. So I propose amending that slightly to say, unless otherwise approved, the scheme shall make provision for supplemental planting within the woodland areas to be retained within the site, hedgehog highways through the garden fences, and provision of bird and bat boxes and swift bricks to be incorporated within their houses slash garages, brackets one per residential unit, which it already says in the applicant's ecological assessment. It recommends that one of those features is attached to each of the unit, be it in the house or garage. So the inclusion of words 'and swift bricks' and brackets 'one per residential unit'.
I had a conversation with you earlier today about the need for glades within the woodland.
Yeah. Chair, the, in the condition I read out earlier, for new condition twenty-six, it did state, including provisions for maintenance slash creation of one or more woodland glades, so I think that would resolve that, because as I understand it, that would be through the management of the woodland.
Right, so we've got proposer for adding swift bricks to, yeah, condition sixteen. I'm going to say, well, I'll let Alan second it. Can we move to a vote on that? That is carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. I know people think it's funny, but this is a semi-rural area, I mean, that's stated clearly in the, in the report, but it's a scrapyard that's set in a semi-rural area. We saw the fields as we went to the site yesterday. Thank you. Okay, shall we move to a vote on the, on the application? Alan, would you like to start it off?
Supporting the officer's recommendations, Chair.
I have reservations, but I support the recommendations. Thank you.
Fully support the recommendations, Chair.
Support, Chair.
For the recommendations, Chair.
For the recommendations, Chair.
Support, Chair. Support the recommendations, Chair.
Support the recommendations, Chair. That was carried unanimously. So moving swiftly on to item ten, record of planning appeal submissions and decisions. Who's going to take us through that?
I'll take you through that, Chair, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Diana.
I'll keep it brief, though. You'll see that there are three dismissed appeals or delegated decisions, and then two allowed appeals. The first was an application for a telecommunications mass that we refused, but the inspector disagreed with our assessment and concluded that the citing and appearance of the proposal would not result in harm to the character and appearance of the area. So that appeal first is the first allowed appeal. The second allowed appeal on page one hundred and eight, you'll see that there's a rather interesting and extensive report there on a case that was allowed at public inquiry. However, I'm not going to comment any further than that because I don't want to prejudice in any way an upcoming public inquiry, in fact, two public inquiries on the same site. So I'm not going to comment any further on that here, but if anyone does have any questions, then, you know, you can come and see me another time. Thank you, Chair.
Does anyone want to comment? In that case, I will. On page one oh five, third paragraph down, the applicant provided an example of a similar extension in the near vicinity. However, the inspector felt this did not the overall character. I just feel there's a word missing there. I mean, I've made a note that possible words might be either enhance, improve or benefit.
I'll double check that for you.
Thank you. And on the, was it page one, one hundred and ten going on to one hundred and eleven? It was the it was the section seventy three notice, which the applicant wanted to remove the affordable housing.
That's the that's the decision on which I don't want to comment at the moment because we do have two further public inquiries in relation to the same site.
Yeah. I would like members to to note that removing affordable housing, when we've recently learned, or some of us have recently learned, that compared to other core cities, we do not seem to be getting the same proportion of affordable housing through with planning applications. So it looks like that's something that our planning officers are going to have to try and find ways to tighten up on so that we can deliver enough affordable housing in the city. And you're welcome to minute those comments and I don't think they have any direct bearing on the that particular appeal.
Chair, just on that, I fully recommend, you know, exactly what you said. And we've been saying it for many years in here, you know, that, you know, why aren't we getting that? And I just wondered if legal can come back to us at the next meeting and give us an update on on her thoughts why we aren't pushing that as a in a city. Thanks.
But it may it may come down in parts of resource, we don't we don't know. But Victoria may want to respond to you, Gary?
And, you know, this very short answer I've got at the moment is viability, really. Is that where a developer can come forward and say that they can't get the required amount of profit out of the site? Then affordable housing is something that is, you know, taken away on the application. So that's sort of the short answer, really, is that if it is not viable to provide affordable housing, often they will get permission to appeal.
I know it's a bit with hindsight, but given the the last application that we took, can we make sure that that is as watertight as possible so that we keep those two affordable homes in?
So when it first came round, you know, when they said we can have affordable homes or even pay us more money for that site and not have affordable homes on that site so we can put that money elsewhere to another site, you know, if we're, the council's building some homes, we could put it into there. That seems to lack, you know, that's that's for the last few years, that's not that's not come along. So maybe what you're saying, Chair, is relevant. Thanks.
Yeah, I think it's to do with why we seem to be out of kilter compared to other core cities that have more success in getting affordable homes built through the planning applications that come to them. I think that that covers it. So on to item eleven, date and time of the next meeting, which will be on Tuesday, the tenth of October, twenty twenty three. I look forward to seeing you all then. Thank you very much to everyone who's attended.